I'd like to call the order, the Metropolitan School District of Washington Township School Board Meeting for Wednesday, January 22nd. We'd like everybody to rise and we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and just so for the record, so the record can show that all five board members are present tonight. And the first item on our agenda for this evening is School Spotlight from Nora Elementary.
The school board has the presentation in your board documents, so we can open it up while Dr. Taylor tries to get to get it on the big screen. Mr. Schlifki, do you have the deck?
I can look off.
Okay, well, we can open it here.
Well, we'll start with our highlights for Points of Pride. A Points of Pride for staff. Ms. Fleischer, who was actually here this evening, was the English Learner Educator Excellence Award winner for the state of Indiana. And Ms. Partee was the Black, recognized as Black Excellence in Education Award winner. So really a banner year for us at Nora. For students, we have 257 students who had an attendance rate of 97% or better for the first semester, which is really an accomplishment. So well done to our students there. And 97% of our ENL students increased their Weta composite score during the last assessment last year. So really proud of our students for that. We had the highest passing rate for iRead3 in Nora, in the last 10 years for Nora at 82.4%. And we've continued to be an ENL exemplary school, hosting visits from Abbott Elementary in Fort Wayne, several teachers from Carmel, and upcoming visits from Lebanon schools as they learn about ENL practices. So really proud of kind of this creating a groundswell of best practices that we have at Nora. As we continue to think about equitable achievement, obviously, we've done a lot of really impressive work. Our students and staff continue to put in the effort. A couple of highlights of that are our iLearn Math. Majority of our subgroups grew 4% or more, meeting or surpassing the district goals for achievement. Our passing rate on iLearn, while we talked about the 82%, if we look at our subgroups, 81.8% of our Black students met their goal, 85.2% of our Hispanic students, 84.6% of our white students, and 100% of our multiracial students passed the iRead3 assessment last year. This year, as we continue to look, composite scores with DIBELS, meeting the at or above benchmark, grew by 8% for both Black and white students, and our multiracial students by 7% from getting here to this latest assessment. As we continue to think about ways that we're going to continue to improve, one of the things that makes Nora unique is a large ENL population. And so one of the ways that we continue to support ENL learners is recognizing that we do have a big population. So we have 101 Level 1 learners, which if you know how Weta ranks that out, would be the beginning learners, which is about 18% of our student population. So we have to think differently on how we support those students. So really intentional planning with our ENL team and referring to PSYOP strategies throughout the lesson, not only best practices for ENL learners, but best practices for everyone in the classroom. We continue to focus on PLCs and really spending time decomposing those new Indiana State standards, allowing us to have a deeper understanding and really intentionally implement some great instructional practices. Several promising practices that we've seen helped to close the achievement gap, flexible grouping of students. So you will see students moving between classrooms, moving between different groups within the school community to best meet their needs based on local assessments. Our MTSS behavior and academic frameworks has helped to support all of our students. We continue to focus on subgroups during our PLC data discussions and the intentional time in the school day for enrichment, intervention, and pre-teaching of skills to make sure that everyone can achieve during that tier one time. The most important part of tonight is talking about our special recognition. And so first and foremost, we have Aranza. If you bear with me, Aranza's story is a special one, so I'm going to take a few minutes on this because I think it speaks to the excellence that is Aranza. "Resilient, hard work, determined, joyful, positive, helpful, and compassionate." This is how Aranza's teachers describe her. But you will see so much more. So if you bear with me, I'd like to share her story. Aranza's story begins in Venezuela with her parents who both worked in law enforcement. However, because of political prosecution, it became clear their lives were in danger and had to leave home. First, her father left for the United States, speaking little to no English and having no personal connections here, working hard to save money as an effort to bring his family to the United States. A year later, he finally saved enough, and Aranza's mother, older sister, and younger brother began a harrowing journey after saying goodbye to their relatives. Leaving with only a backpack, the family journeyed through Colombia's jungles on foot for four days in the rain. Aranza shared, "I remember being very hungry and tired. We had no food for two days, only water. My whole body ached. I got very sick, but we kept going. I found, we found other families traveling, walking together for safety, sharing everything we had, and helping each other." The group traveled through seven countries: Colombia, Panama, Costa Rica, Honduras, Nicaragua, Guatemala, and Mexico, mostly by foot and bus, paying their way for safe crossings, buying food when possible, staying in hotels, places for migrants, or even strangers' homes who opened up. Along the 30-day journey, the family witnessed some horrific and terrible things, things that anyone should see, let alone young children. However, they encountered some extremely generous people who extended a helping hand. Eventually, the family reached the American border and asked for asylum. During their several days in immigration, the belongings from the outside they brought in were taken and thrown away, leaving them with only a plastic bag and some documents. Eventually, they reunited with their father, and the entire family moved to the Nora area. In Aranza's words, "I was happy to see him. I was grateful for both my parents because they worked so hard every single day. Even though we didn't speak English, they got up early to send us to school, make sure we were safe, and made sure we did our homework. School is very important to my family. I am very grateful for my school. I love Nora. I remember crying every day at the beginning because I could not understand what the teachers were saying. I could not explain my ideas. I think learning was hard because the teachers were saying wonderful things, but I couldn't understand them. Very caring were my teachers, and it took time for me to understand what they're saying, but I asked friendly students who spoke Spanish to help me. I love being able to communicate with the people, to read, to write my thoughts. I am happy because I live here, I am safe and loved. Above all, I am grateful for my friends and family, and grateful for Nora." Since arriving in the middle of second grade, just over two years ago, she has begun an amazing process of excelling in classwork, performing above grade level, passed the iRead assessment, and is... and now assists newcomers in the same way she was helped by translating for those at Nora. Well, Aranza, we are lucky to have you at Nora, and we are so proud of you.
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm going to try and pull myself together. Our Above and Beyond Award winner, Maisha Fagan. Maisha volunteers at Nora once a week, but that does not begin to share the impact she has. She is always willing to support and assist Nora events, from classroom activities to the grand PTO events. You can bet if there is an activity at Nora, she's assisting in some manner. One of our staff members shared, "Because of her consistent, because of her consistent parent volunteering, she has not only developed great relations with our students, but they love her, and love is in all capitals. She is more than just a volunteer, she is part of our family. Firsthand, I have seen her kindness as she checks in on staff members at the car ride line, who are going through tough times, not because she has to, because she cares." In her response to the invitation tonight on Parent Square, if you don't mind me sharing a little bit of this, she said, "To the faculty, staff, and students, we thank you for the privilege of being part of Nora's Something Greater. After all, how many people can say they have learned and grown as an individual, friend, mother, just from their children's school? We are honored to have you as part of our Nora family and part of our Something Greater. Thank you for giving yourself and giving of your time." And our supportive partnership recognition is Odie Shar and Odie's human friend, Meredith Shar.
Oh my God, my sister is so handsome.
There is something special about Odie.
Wait a minute.
There is something special about Odie. She makes you forget that Ms. Shar is even around. On many occasions, I have excitedly greeted Odie in the hallway, completely ignoring Ms. Shar, as I pat Odie excitedly on the side. I have personally made it my goal to be a little bit better boss and recognize that I should not ignore a valued staff member because I am excited to see Odie. The excitement is what makes Odie so special. On the days that Odie is with us, you can see students clustered around her in the hallways as they come in from car ride, greeting her excited to be there. Classes walk a little quieter in the hallways when they see Odie around the corner. Students stand up a little bit straighter when they see Odie and Ms. Shar. During Ms. Shar's math blocks, you can see students deeply engaged in mathematical learning as they slowly pet Odie as she lays on their Promethium board. Students look forward to the days that Odie is there, and so do the staff. Ms. Shar and Odie give of their time so graciously, not only through the process of training and certification, but in giving up preps so Odie can go be present in other classrooms, allowing students to read, talk, and just spend a moment with her. So Meredith, thank you for giving of your time. And Odie, thank you for being such a great dog and such a joy.
Hi. Hi, nice to be here. Probably a first here. Hi. Nice to be here. She will call, yes, for sure. Hi, how are you?
Good seeing you.
Hi.
Oh, no, nothing for me. I don't know if you cooperate, so.
Thank you for letting us celebrate Nora, which I believe is the greatest school, not only in Indiana, but in the country, and we are proud to be the crown jewel of Washington Township. Thank you.
President Turner, may I take a moment of personal privilege, please? I just, I want to make a comment in response to that, and we don't usually do this, but I really feel compelled. And I want to start this by saying, none of us like making things political, but the reality is that politics have been forced upon public schools, whether we like it or not. And after hearing your story today in the times that we're in, I feel like I would be remiss if I did not tell this family how happy we are that they are here with us. That not only are you welcome in our community, acknowledge that you have brought amazing richness and value to our community, and we are just happy you are here, and I want to acknowledge what you are bringing to our community. And thank you for trusting our community and our schools with your family. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, and thank you for, again, thank you for the recognition that you provided today. So typically, I ask folks to, you know, there's time for people that can leave the particular meeting as we start to get into more of the work, but you're always welcome to stick around and listen to the rest of the meeting, but also you feel free to leave if you'd like to. Obviously, we have young folks in the room that may need to, is there homework that needs to be done or something like that? So appreciate everybody that came out tonight. So feel free if you'd like to leave. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's announcements, Dr. Woodson.
Thank you, President Turner. Good evening, everyone. It is mid-year, and we are looking at our report cards on every school right now with our school leaders. That's called our Midyear School Improvement Plan Quality Assurance Review. Each school's school improvement plan is available on their website for the public to see the areas that they are working on improving for their school and school community. And this is a mid-year point where we check in with each of those leaders. So you have access to all of those documents in your board docs. We also continue the sign-up for the board to participate in any of the school visits we have coming up throughout the remainder of the semester, and all of those dates are there for you. It was requested to get the calendar of events for the Indiana School Boards Association for your professional growth, and that attachment is there for Ms. Wilson. We also appreciate the entire teaching and learning team, along with North Central, for holding a really informative webinar on the new implications of the new diploma. The recording is there for you. If you were not able to attend the webinar last week, I highly encourage you just to take a quick listen to that recording. It was great information, so much so that I put in a kudos from a parent that came in. A parent shared that they were very apprehensive and very nervous and concerned about the diploma changes that the state of Indiana undertook and approved in December at the state board, but through the webinar, they feel so much better. And so I do hope you take time to read the kudos that came in, and those can be echoed dozens of times from people's response to the webinar that Teaching and Learning, as well as the North Central staff, put on. We also know we're in the thick of things with the legislative session, so all of your legislative updates from our various support organizations and lobbying groups are there for you to review. And as always, if you ever have a question or an area of advocacy you want me to emphasize, I meet with most of these groups weekly and can take your points or questions to any of those meetings. And to conclude, I have one more kudos that I received. This teacher reached out to Dr. Pettigrew with such strong kudos that I had to share it and will share this one publicly, some highlights of it. They wanted to share some celebrations that North Central is undertaking right now. They shared them with Dr. Taylor in his listening sessions with staff, wanted to share it with Dr. Pettigrew as well. But this teacher really directs most of these celebrations to Mr. Rent's leadership since he has become principal. This teacher said that he has invested in students, faculty, and staff, as well as the community, that Mr. Rent has brought positive changes with a tremendous community support. But this person, this teacher also recognized that CEC also has to support these changes. They wanted to thank Dr. Pettigrew for being a part of the listening sessions with families and staff members. But the celebration specifically about some of the changes at North Central that they attribute to Mr. Rent's leadership, along with his leadership team, are the faculty and staff morale have significantly improved, the building feels alive again, some of that North Central Panther spirit is being restored, pride in student achievements is happening, Mr. Rent's vivacity is contagious, Mr. Rent's willingness to ask questions, opportunities to recognize other staff, his respect for the legacy and history at North Central High School with renewed hope. So I just thought I would share that very publicly about Mr. Rent's leadership, and we certainly appreciate the teacher for sharing in such detail. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Woodson. Next on our agenda is the time for comments from the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, I will move to the next item, which is the Consent Agenda. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, President Turner, Dr. Woodson, members of the board. It's time for everyone's favorite part of the agenda for this evening, the Consent Agenda. So I move and recommend that you, excuse me, I don't move, I recommend that you approve the Consent Agenda. It includes the minutes of the January 8th, 2025 reorg and regular school board meeting, approval of three payroll calculation summary reports, a claims docket in the amount of $594,144.54, a human resources report containing for classified personnel, we have 22 new hires, those are numbers 165 through 186, eight resignations, numbers 84 through 91, two retirements, numbers six and seven, three terminations, numbers 15 through 17, six leaves, numbers one through six. For certified personnel, we have two resignations, numbers 177 and 178, and then three retirements for the school year 25, 26. Those are numbers one through three. There is one non-competitive grant gift or donation to present for board approval. Information has been provided in your board packet for review regarding that grant. With that, I'm happy to answer any question the board may have.
Board have questions? Entertained a motion?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented by Dr. Table.
To move the second, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Dr. Table. Now we'll move on to our action items for this evening. The first one is the approval of SAT Success Student Bootcamp Agreement. Dr. Seaver.
Good evening, President Turner, Dr. Woodson, and members of the board. I am here tonight seeking your review and approval of the SAT Success Student Bootcamp Agreement. We would like to support students post-secondary goals by providing targeted SAT preparation tutoring to North Central students. The SAT Success Student Bootcamp facilitated by academic tutoring and test prep would provide 150 North Central students with an intensive four-hour bootcamp where they will learn test-taking strategies, practice SAT items in a fun and interactive environment, and raise their score for 200 points or higher. Our plan is to hold two in-person SAT bootcamp sessions during the school day for students whose PSAT scores are within 200 points of passing the standardized test, serving 100 students in total. We will also offer a virtual option to occur on a Saturday morning, and this option will be open to all students, and the first 50 North Central students who sign up will participate. We believe this approach will provide targeted support to students who might benefit the most from training, while also offering this experience to any North Central student who is interested in the opportunity to develop their test-taking skills. Ultimately, boosting students' SAT scores will help students attain their post-secondary goals and will also support school initiatives to increase SAT achievement scores. This opportunity will be paid with our Career Coaching Grant, and I am happy to answer any questions the board may have.
More, Mrs. Jordan Davis?
Maybe I'm just not reading it the way it's intended, so it's more of a clarification. For the 100 who will do it in person, are those students identified, or is it just voluntary where I was within a certain amount of passing, and so I'd like to take this? Or is it a combination?
A combination. So they will be identified and invited to participate during the school day.
Okay. And so if, let's say Deirdre missed it by 218 points, but others were more, could I volunteer to do it if there's space?
Yes. So that's why we're offering the opportunity on Saturday. So regardless of your score, you would have the opportunity to sign up to participate. We're trying to be intentional about targeting the students who we think will benefit from it most for during the school day, but then opening it up to everyone on the weekend.
Okay, that's where I was confused. Got it. Thank you.
Hi, Mrs., go ahead.
Sorry, just a question. When you refer to being who might benefit, sorry, within 200 points of passing the standardized test, you're referring to the graduation requirement of passing.
Correct.
One question for me. So if, let's say, this is the first time we're doing this because of the grant, correct? So, and I know, I'm going to call out a person's name, but Mrs. Smith. If this is successful, are there thoughts about how we continue this once the grant is no longer viable?
Yes, so we have other grants that we could consider, so we'll certainly look at the data from this. There's also the possibility that another career coaching grant might open up, and so we would certainly look at this first year of data to determine if we need to find an alternative funding source and work with Mrs. Smith to decide if it needs to come from another grant or one of her pots of money.
Yes, Mrs. George Davis?
Remind me what the high school passing, what the requirement for passing for high school is?
You know, I don't have it memorized, but I can send it to you.
Thank you, that's fine.
Sure.
Other questions? Entertained a motion?
I move that we approve the SAT Success Student Bootcamp Agreement as presented by Dr. Seaver.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next on the action item list is approval of 2024 Year End Transfer Resolution. Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, President Turner, Dr. Woodson, members of the board. I bring to you this evening a customary resolution that we have done for over a decade. And this is a transfer resolution, whenever we have identified excess funds, then we transfer those funds to our rainy day. In this case, it's a little higher than we have done in the past, and that is due to the SIR grants that we had. And during the first set that was CARES, we had to use a rate, which they call is a restricted rate, for indirect costs. So our indirect cost are, is a revenue generator for the district to cover the overhead that it takes to administer a grant. When it changed to SIR 2 and SIR 3, the whole regulations changed where we're able to use the unrestricted rate for our revenue from the indirect cost. And just wanted to kind of give you a little context of that. It's a difference of 14.41% for our unrestricted rate versus the 2.92% then that we used to use in the past for our regular federal grants. So that created a nice revenue generator.
revenue generator for us that goes into our operations fund. So that is why it's a little higher than we have done customarily, and that is due to that excess that we receive from the indirect cost. And then the law does require that the board approves any transfers that go into the rainy day fund. So I would ask for the board's approval of this $3.1 million from our operations fund to our rainy day fund, as you'll see in your resolution.
Board have questions? Seeing none? Entertained a motion?
Move to approve $3.1 million from the operations. Oh, sorry. I move to approve the operations to rainy day fund transfer resolution as presented by Ms. Smith.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mrs. Smith. Next up is approval of speech and language pathologist contract. Dr. Skabinski.
President Turner, Dr. Woodson, members of the board, I come before you today to ask permission to seek into a contracting agreement with a S L school language pathologist focused specifically on our students coming from A B A centers. At the beginning of the year, I presented to the team that we had 32 students arrive in Washington Township coming from A B A centers, ranging from kindergarten to 10th grade. Majority of those students are in our primary grades, but we do have students at North Central High School. These students have never been in a schoolhouse before. These students come to us with a great deal of needs. I was able to find a school language pathologist that has worked primarily in A B A centers. I would like to bring her on as a contracted employee to support the now 34 students, because we continue to grow, from students coming from A B A centers to the M S D of Washington Township to ensure that they are reaching their full potential. We are developing their communication and working to support their goals and individuality. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Doesn't ask it.
Correct. Yes.
Any other questions?
If there are no further questions, then we approve the speech and language pathologist contract as presented by Dr. Skabinski.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Next up is approval of North Central High School Phase 6C G M P for Washington Township. Washington Township School Sites? Oh, Services Center, sorry. Site improvements package. Mr. Boots, I should learn my acronym.
Good evening, Dr. Woodson and members of the board. I am here this evening seeking approval of Washington Township Services Center renovation Phase 6C, guaranteed maximum price for the Skillman Corporation. This combines Phase 6C with the previously bid phases 6A and 6B. So this one includes and supersedes the two previous ones as we do when we phase bids in this manner. The bids were taken on December 12th. As usual, the Skillman Corporation has conducted pre-warrant conference with the apparent low bidder and has provided the guaranteed maximum price amendment attached in the, in your board packet. I will note that while the X B E attainment for this package is only 0.32%, mainly due to its narrow focus and limited scope, the X B E attainment for the total of all three phases, 6A, 6B and 6C is 42%. Another note is that we are still analyzing several all bid alternate items. And should the decision be to accept those alternates, we would bring them to you for approval as a change order to the contract. The total amount for phases 6A, B and C is $13,387,692 and will be funded from capital referendum funding. I'll be happy to respond to any questions.
Board? I do have one for you, Mr. Boots. So appreciate the update on X B E piece. So you did include a document, X B E tab?
Yes.
So how, am I reading this correctly that that 0.32% is? What's the total for that? Is that 3 million? That can't be it. That seems not high. Am I reading this chart?
Would be 0.32% of, if we take all of the alternates, the 3,149.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so totally for X B E total is that 3.2%, but then you had 100% on excavating.
The 100% is for the second place bidder.
Right.
Not even in the picture.
Okay, so it's only the top ones.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Board, any other questions? Entertained a motion?
I move that we approve the, we approve the N C H S Phase 6C G M P for the W T S C site improvements package as presented by Mr. Boots.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Boots. The last action item is approval of a 2016-2020 capital construction project change orders. Mr. Boots.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am asking approval of project change order number 004 to the North Central High School Project Phase 3. That change order is in the amount of $98,002 and represents the work packages as presented in your board packet. That funding will be from capital referendum funding, of course. Be happy to respond to any questions.
Yes.
Just, so I, what is a jewelry room? A jewelry room?
Jewelry room.
So where they store, oh, making jewelry.
Making jewelry.
Okay, I was like, what in the world? It's costing us 40. Got it. Okay, well, it just, it came off strange, but it was that much for. Got it.
Sure.
I'm on board now.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion?
Move that we approve change order number 004, Skillman Davis J V, North Central Phase 3, as presented by Mr. Boots.
I'll second.
It's moving second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Boots. I'm gonna ask you a question later, because we won't do it here. So next on our agenda is the information items and Department of Education Transfer Report Analysis. Dr. Taylor.
All right. Thank you, President Turner, Dr. Woodson, members of the board. I come to you this evening prepared to talk about our Department of Education Transfer Report. This is typically something that I would share via a memo, but as a result of some of the questions that we've received this year regarding enrollment, some of the proposed legislation that is out there right now, particularly in House Bill 1136, we felt like it was an opportunity we could take to move that memo to more of a public meeting and have a conversation about settlement in our district. Where are our students going who live in Washington Township schools? So this is a high-level summary of that analysis that I completed. And so for the purposes of our time together this evening, I want to review that report with you, talk about settlement in the corporation, as well as students who transfer to different schools, either within the corporation or outside of our district. Share that analysis with you. Talk a little bit more about the proposed legislation of House Bill 1136, and then we'll also talk about enrollment data trend highlights reflective of this data. This report is published every fall. This was published based on the count date of 10/1/24. It's, when it's actually visible and accessible, does kind of vary. It was a little bit later this year than normal. Normally, we try to, we typically get this in December timeframe. And this year, we didn't get access to it until after winter break. But it is an annual report. It does provide a breakdown of students with legal, legal settlement in our school district and what schools they're choosing to go to, as well as students who may choose to go outside of our district. And so students with legal settlement in our district, you can see we have 12,358 total students who live within the Washington Township School District. 1,330 of those students attend a non-public school exercising their choice option through our voucher program, which they refer to as the Indiana Choice Scholarship. 889 of that allotment of students attended a different traditional public school corporation or charter school. And then 10,139 of that 12,358 students choose to go to Washington Township Schools here in the district. And so that's roughly 82% of the students who have legal settlement in the district. Student transfer, so if you take that remaining 2,219 students, 1,330 of those students attended a non-public school using that Indiana Choice Scholarship. 449 of those students chose a different, a different traditional public school. So maybe they chose to go to I P S or Lawrence or Pike. 415 of the 2,219 students chose to go to a public charter school. And then 25 of the 2,219 students attended a different traditional public school for reasons other than parent choice. And so that could be, there could have been a, a legal matter, could have been a custodial issue that caused those students to go to a school outside of our school system. As far as the specific analysis relative to charter school selection, just where, where do our students show up? The most charter schools receiving students from Washington Township in terms of total enrollment is you have the Indiana Math and Science Academy North, that's 64 students who have legal settlement here in the township. Ace Prep Academy, they have 50 students who have legal settlement here in Washington Township. And then a question we've often received this year is, you know, what was the impact of the Girls in STEM Academy that we know is in a shared building at the Hayson Hebrew Academy? And so they have seven of students who have legal settlement here in Washington Township Schools. As far as private parochial schools, St. Luke's and St. Pius, those are K8 buildings, they have 150, around 150 students apiece. And then from the high school lens, Shetard has the most of our students with 125. As far as other traditional public schools with the most Washington Township students, I P S has the most with 147, and then Lawrence Township has 84. And I apologize, we omitted, I omitted the L there in schools. I apologize for not catching that air. Enrollment trend highlights. So the good news is we have increased students with legal settlement in our township since the analysis I did back in 2223 school year by 1,000 students. The good news is we do have 82% of students with legal settlement in the township do attend our schools. The state average, though, is 90%. And then 84, 84% of students with legal settlement attended Washington Township Schools back in '22. And so that's important to note. 10% of students with legal settlement in Washington Township utilize the Choice Scholarship. 7% utilize this back in 2022, 2023. It's important to note, though, that does not show that students who did attend Washington Township Schools are, more students are electing to use the Choice. It could be students who are already in non-public schools are now just utilizing the voucher program that is, we know, more accessible to families, more so now than it's ever been previously. So that's important to delineate that. And then we do know that 1,021 student transfers have come into our district. So we refer to that as non-resident students here in the township. That is an increase. Back in 2223, we had 836 students. And so typically, traditionally, as I've paid attention to that data, we've ranged anywhere from 750 to 950 non-resident students. So this 1,021 students is an increase. It's the highest that we've really been in this district for quite a while with regard to non-resident families choosing to come to Washington Township Schools. Before, before I get into the next slide, I think it's important to know the makeup of that 1,021. So the majority of students choosing to come to Washington Township Schools from outside the district, the districts that are losing those students are I P S is the most. Right now, with just under 600 students who have chosen to come to Washington Township Schools over I P S. The second district is Pike Township with just under 200 students who are choosing our township. And then followed by Lawrence, who's third with around 180. So as you can see, they're our neighbors. Carmel Clay Schools has about 20 students who are choosing to come to Washington Township Schools. So that's just to give you a little bit more of a makeup of that 1,021 students who are coming to us. And then as far as House Bill 1136, which does, did kind of lead us to wanting to make sure this information was public, was a very concerning proposed bill. And that bill provides that if more than 50% of students who have legal settlement in a particular school corporation, if they attend a different school than their public school, that that school corporation would dissolve. And each school would turn to an independently ran, locally governed, independent charter school. And so that is a very concerning piece of legislation. And that currently, right now, if passed, would disband five school districts. That's I P S, Gary Community Schools, Tri Township Consolidated Schools, Union Schools and Canton City Schools. Now, what's unique about these are I P S and Gary are large public school systems, whereas Tri, Union and Canton are extremely small and much more rural. Whereas I P S and Gary are, are city, the other three are very rural school districts. Those three school districts that are rural also really rely heavily on a virtual school for their enrollment. So in fact, Union, you'll see some of our students with legal settlement in our township who attend Union, which at first is like, what's that all about? Well, they have a virtual academy there. So students who are looking for that type of option for their school choice are applying to go to Union, and Union kind of touts their enrollment growth. And their enrollment growth is due to that virtual academy, because a lot of their students with legal settlement in that particular community, they're choosing to go outside to a neighboring district because that, those neighboring districts are able to offer more of the extracurriculars, co-curricular activities and all that. So it's a really, when I looked into those five school districts, it's really unique as to why or the potential impact of this on those school districts. And so that's a very concerning bill. Right now, obviously, I don't know that there's a lot of belief that that will pass. But as you know, legislation can move fast. Things can get wrapped up into other bills. And these are certainly things that don't come up just once and go away. They can come back on a recurring basis. And so, you know, does that, could that 50% change to a higher percentage at some point? You know, those are things that are very concerning to a community in a public school system, especially as we continue to promote vouchers and Indiana Choice Scholarship pieces for, for all, which the governor has come out and been supportive of. So I wanted to make sure the board was, was aware of that particular piece of legislation. But also, right now, here in Washington Township, sitting firmly in that 80% range, 82%, been as high as 84%, feeling really confident that, you know, the, by far, the majority of people in our school district are choosing Washington Township Schools. But we've got to continue to make sure we're taking care of our own and making sure that we are the strongest and the best for this community because there are just so many options. So just thought that that was important information. So just thought that that was important information to share with the board, happy to answer any questions the board may have relative to that.
Ms. Horford?
I have a couple of questions. Well, one is just confirming. So essentially, what you're saying, what the bill is saying, that is, for example, if fifty percent of Washington Township students went to schools outside of Washington Township, then we would be on that list. That's what that means.
That's correct. So right now, we're at eighty-two percent. If we were to dip down to fifty, we would be on the list.
Just wanted to make sure I was understanding that. And then the second question is, when you were talking about the virtual school in Union, the Union Schools? So the students that live in our district who are opting to use that, is that number reflected in the number of kids who are in the Choice category?
That's correct.
Thirteen thirty?
Okay.
Ms. Frye?
In terms of the total number of students with legal settlement, the twelve thousand three fifty-eight, what about students, even though I know vouchers are close to universal now, I think the income cap is still like two hundred thousand. So if you have a family, it's a private school, a Washington Township family is in a private school, and they've never used a voucher because they're rich, do they show up in that twelve thousand three fifty-eight?
Yes, they do show up in that twelve thousand three.
Okay, so then, I guess I'm confused because when I look at the pie chart, and it says thirteen thirty of them with settlement in Washington Township attended a non-public school through the Indiana Choice Scholarship.
Right.
But I'm just, I'm confused. Is that thirteen?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, let me check into that, let me check on that twelve thousand amount, if that includes those who already are in private parochial without the Choice Scholarship amount.
Honestly, yeah, it's an interesting question.
Let me check on that.
Because if the bill talks about students with legal settlement, I don't think private schools are necessarily required to disclose data about their student populations if it's not through a Choice Scholarship. So, okay, thank you for that, answers the question. We don't quite know, but it also raises an interesting question about the bill. And then this is more just to make a point, when we look at the fact that we're at eighty-two percent and the statewide average is ninety percent, true or false? Our community compared to most other communities just has a lot more private school and charter school, one of the most.
We are one of the most, as far as school districts goes in the state of Indiana, we have the more school choice, most school choice options arguably than any other school district in the state of Indiana.
I get that, I just wanted to kind of make that, maybe look at that number compared to the average, that it's, you know, there's some reasons for that.
Yes.
Mr. Tom?
My only question was, so the state tracks students by STN, state test number, something like that? So that's where you're able, and that's how you're able, that's how the state's able to say this is where?
That's correct.
Okay.
Other questions?
This kind of, actually, my question kind of dovetails off of what Ms. Frye said. So within Washington Township, obviously, we have a lot of different private schools. On your list of where our students are tracked, is that just, you gave us the highest number? In other words, for example, I saw Chitards on there, but I didn't see like Park Tudor. I didn't see Sycamore or Orchard or?
So I just chose the highlights, the highest. You can get, there's a link there that you can actually pull up the report, and you can find where every student has gone. Those numbers just weren't the top two or three.
That's why I figured wasn't near top, no?
Yeah, you can find out how many are going to every single school around us if they have legal settlement in the district.
Okay, that helps me, thank you.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I have one more, real quick. So our eighty percent, which is great, any sense of how we compare to our township neighbors? Is it about the same?
That's a great question. I do not have an analysis of other districts in terms of what their amount is.
And you don't need to spend time, I was just curious.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question. You know, but, you know, for Washington Township, we've never been settled with being below state average in anything. So, you know, I think that when we talk about marketing and we talk about making sure we're taking care of our own and offering comprehensive whole-child education programming here in the district and making sure it's of high quality, that's got to continue to be a source of focus in our district strategic planning because just of where we are and the, what school competition and school choice has evolved into in the state, unfortunately. But it does make sure we're keeping an eye on our data, and if ninety percent is what the state average is, we should be at that and working towards that, that state average or above it.
And since you said that, so one of the things I'm sitting here thinking about, when you look at the folks that opt to come to Washington Township, that isn't in that eighty-two percent, right? That's, you have to actually live in the district.
That is not in that eighty-two percent.
So you have an additional, you have people wanting to come here that would not count based off of this bill that says, you know, well, we may have eighty percent, but we have another, you know, twelve hundred students that are coming into the district.
Yeah, so it's students transferring out, you take that total versus students transferring in, and we're plus the amount of that difference. And a lot of school districts, to Ms. Horst Kruger's question, a lot of school districts around us are not in the positive, they're in the negative when it comes to that, when it comes to that equation and doing that math in terms of transfer out versus transfer in. That is a plus to us.
Thank you. No other questions? Thank you, Dr. Taver.
Very interesting, thank you.
Last action item for tonight is the District Strategic Plan Process Update on Priority Number One, Equitable Achievement. Dr. Pettigrew, Dr. Thorpe, Dr. Seaver, Mr. Blom.
And as the team comes, I just wanted to reiterate that this is our third info item on our district strategic plan. The prior two board meetings, we covered the other priority areas that are outlined in our district strategic plan. And because this one is the top priority, number one, and the reason why we exist as a school system on equitable achievement, Dr. Pettigrew, based on a board suggestion, came up with a presentation for you to follow along. So for this particular update, I would encourage you to follow along with the presentation and not the QAR document, but I do want to call your attention to the QAR document because it has a great deal of additional detail and support links and documents to articulate progress on the strategies. Dr. Pettigrew?
I'm Board President Turner, Dr. Woodson, members of the board. So we are here to provide an update. And as Dr. Woodson has explained, really, the DSP document is a support for what we'll present tonight. We wanted to pull out some of the main categories that you'll see across that very lengthy document so that it's more palatable and easy to digest. And so we'll start here with... There we go. We'll start with our organizational charts. As you know, we are a pretty large department. We have about thirteen employees in teaching and learning. That includes special services, student services. And so we have a pretty robust team that has many roles and responsibilities to ensure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students and our staff. And as you can see here, we're going to focus on really four areas for tonight, and that is our data-driven instructional leadership approach, our strategic professional development initiatives, implementation of our core teaching practices as a part of Elevate, and our Equity and Access Initiative. So let's kind of walk through progress in these areas. So we've implemented a comprehensive approach that combines classroom observations using our Elevate instructional framework. And so we really want to focus on our Elevate framework in our Delt meetings as well as in our Level meetings with the directors, and then also through our QAR process, which began today. And we talk about discipline, academic data monitoring through a real-time data dashboard. I know we've referenced Power BI quite a bit this year, but it has been a game changer for how we not only access data, but we can have an action plan around our data. Power BI has allowed us to track our academic progress along student groups as well as our discipline data along student subgroups. We were able to identify trends and then make data-informed decisions about this, about data in Power BI. So we also have our Elevate walkthroughs, and our directors will get into it at the levels. But we have strategically structured our core target practices to ensure that we are not focusing on every single one at one time. It could be a lot for a teacher and even for an administrator to use the walkthrough tool to evaluate that class, not evaluate, but to provide feedback. And so rather trying to improve everything at once, we've broken it up into three focused domains. So we began with learning community, and we focused on the learning community from August until early November. And then we're currently deep into student-centered instruction, and that continues through March the seventh. And in the spring, we'll focus into our final domain, which is teacher and student partnership. And so really, the goal of this is to allow for deeper implementation for our buildings, to allow for us to have greater conversations around those promising practices as well as opportunities for growth. And to that end, if you look here, we've increased our Elevate walkthroughs from last year, sixty-nine percent increase. And so when you look at this through the elementary lens, we have five hundred and forty-nine Elevate walkthroughs, middle school, four twenty-five, high schools, three eighty. And so again, we've increased our percentage of admin and coaches going into the classrooms and providing these walkthroughs. And I think also, you know, while the numbers are truly impressive, it's also important to note that we take that data and then inform our next step. So it's not just about completing, walkthrough is a compliance, but it's about coming back to the table and having really hard conversations sometimes about what we're seeing in classrooms and how we can improve, not just at that level, but as we look at more articulation across pre-K-12. I know the directors will share specific information from their levels, but just a few things here, when we look at K-12, some promising practices that we're seeing in our data. So if you look here, one of our areas of promise is facilitating a classroom environment that is safe, welcoming, clean, and organized. And so when we think about the learning environment being not just physically safe for students, but emotionally and mentally safe, in a place where they feel safe to make mistakes, they feel safe to learn, I think we saw that earlier today with Nora. So we want students to feel that when they come in the classroom, and we had a high percentage of our administrators observe this in the walkthrough. And then if you look at the second point here from our student-centered responsive instruction, you see that we are explicitly modeling through lesson delivery and how we structure that lesson. Then also, students are contributing, that second point, to the lesson or material by actively engaging in the lesson. And these have been observed quite frequently across the entire district as an area of promise, and so we believe that that will lead to better outcomes. Now, with great strategies, we also see that there's opportunities. And so here, we have two areas that we can improve, two opportunities to improve in K-12, and that is learning environment domain. We need to strengthen how we establish and maintain high expectations and classroom norms. And then as we look at our student-centered responsive instruction domain, there are two areas for development, and that is supporting teachers and differentiating instruction through multiple approaches, and then helping students develop stronger self-assessment skills so they can better understand their own learning progress. And so these are really guiding conversations, not only at the district level, but when our directors go in and meet with the principals at the levels, they talk about these opportunities, not just at K-12, but then we bring it in a more granular fashion and look at it at elementary, where are we seeing areas of promise, where are there opportunities? And I'm sure the directors will address some of that tonight. So our QAR process, which launched today, as stated, represents a significant enhancement in how we monitor and support school improvement. So we've made some strategic improvements to our QAR process. So we've added detailed tracking of suspensions and expulsions by subgroup. We've added the IRE data monitoring for both second and third grade in our QAR process. We've also streamlined our approach to ensure that we are including no more than three goals and no more than three strategies, so that we're not doing a lot of things poorly, but we're doing some very structured things well. And then we've also introduced the peer observation piece where principals can really learn from each other, and we saw it today, where a principal not only presented in her QAR, but came back and sat in another QAR to listen and to see what is going on in other buildings. As we talk about discipline quite often, this is some encouraging news across the district. And so through our efforts on really positive behavior supports, you will see district-wide out-of-school suspensions have decreased by twenty-seven percent, and virtual placements are down sixty-nine percent district-wide. And then I know we talk quite often about North Central, and so there's been a seventeen percent reduction in OSS at North Central and eighty percent decrease in virtual placements. And when we think about these numbers, again, they're impressive, but they're not just numbers. That means that kids are in classrooms, that they are building connections with not only the administrators, but the teachers. And so we see positive outcomes as a result of kids being in school. And so we're excited by this data as well. We also provide professional development. We've heard a little bit today in our QAR process, and I think it's been pretty consistent that our buildings enjoy our data analysis PD. We're excited by that. But our Delt team represents a comprehensive approach to how we look at data. And so we have principal support meetings that focus on professional learning communities. We have the Elevate analysis in our principal support meeting. We have the Power BI data review with our data analytics team. And then we really focus on real-time monitoring of the academic and the discipline data as it relates to our school improvement plans and our DSP. We also do that with our APs and our deans. And then at the center of all of this is making sure that we are analyzing data real-time. We analyze data quite often. I think when we look at even our checkpoint data, we have a process for how we evaluate our checkpoint data and not just at the building level, but a collaboration between CEC and the buildings. And so not just in checkpoint one, we'll see it again with checkpoint two, we'll see it again with checkpoint three. When we look at our professional development, we know that professional development really is the foundation of great instruction, great assessment outcomes. And so our approach PD this year has been to design both an individual and system-wide PD for our staff. And so we're focusing on four key areas, deepening our work in culturally responsive teaching practices. Dr. Skabinski and her team have done quite a bit with crisis prevention intervention. All of our administrators have access to this training, quite a few have completed it. We're implementing SEL curriculum at the elementary and middle level and looking at advisory to see how we can tighten our SEL lessons. And then finally, we're providing targeted support for our administrators and staff. And so we want to make sure we're equipping them with the tools that they will need to successfully move the needle in their buildings. So we know that our PD is built on multiple layers of support. And so when we think about, you know, just the admin support meetings, when we think about the leadership meetings from TNL, the Level meetings with our principals, our goal really is to strengthen areas that they have identified as an area that they need support in. So we have provided surveys as an example, how can we better support your instructional leadership? How can we better support your building's leadership? And so we curate PD opportunities for not just the principals, but as well as the teachers in the building. Moving along, and I presented this in November, one of my highlights is that I get to go into the buildings and provide professional development opportunities for the entire staff, pre-booked this semester, it was booked last semester, and these are some of the topics that I've presented in the buildings. But really looking at how we can see every kid in the building and look at their funds of knowledge they bring to the learning environment. How can we reach students that have been typically marginalized and not as engaged in education in the learning environment? Is that through curriculum? Is that through the delivery of the curriculum? Is that through just the art and science of instruction? And so having opportunities to get into the building to provide some of this structured PD. And then lastly, equity and inclusion and access and opportunity, we want to highlight just a few of these initiatives. And so one of our areas, again, we want to make sure that we are mitigating exclusionary discipline. And sometimes it's great when you bring in speakers and they can speak to what it looks like, not just in Indianapolis or in Indiana, but world, you know, worldwide. And so we had Principal Cafeley that came in, and that was an inspiring PD that many of our administrators spoke to afterwards, as well as Dr. Severance, who provided some opportunities to analyze data in a different way. We've enhanced collaboration with child advocates, interrupting racism for children. One hundred percent of our administrators have completed this training. And then, of course, implementation of real-time data analysis using our data analytics team, but also the work from Dr. Severance and how we can analyze it on a consistent basis. And so as Mr. Blom makes his way up here... And so as Mr. Blom makes his way up here, it's important for us to just remember that it takes a comprehensive approach to really move the needle. It's not one singular thing that really does the job. There's no magic bullet that will change data. It's a comprehensive approach to how we develop teachers, how we develop principals, how we collaborate to ensure that we're getting the very best possible outcomes in each of our buildings. And it is difficult, it's difficult work, it's worthy work, I believe it's worthy work. But we're doing a great job collaborating to make sure we're moving the needle in all of our buildings.
Good evening. We are excited about the teaching and learning happening throughout our elementary schools. We're in our third year of the current math curriculum, and it is clear that our teachers are feeling confident with that implementation. We don't currently have a great diagnostic assessment for math at the beginning of the school year. So we're currently exploring options for how we can provide that data moving forward. We're also working with Dr. Ryan Flessner, Butler Professor and Washington Township parent, to examine strategies for improving math fact fluency. As you know, we adopted a new literacy curriculum this year aligned with the science of reading. As with any new curriculum, there is a learning curve for everyone, but we're already seeing very high levels of student engagement and aspects of the program in which our students are rising to a higher level of academic rigor than they've been challenged to in the past. Our building leaders and their instructional coaches have done a great job ensuring their teachers have the support they need to implement at a high level. And our district curriculum team has worked incredibly hard to create an implementation timeline that includes opportunities for professional development and classroom support. Now that we've had a semester to get to know the program, our district and building-based coaches are looking closely at the alignment to Indiana academic standards within each unit, as well as any pacing guide changes that might be necessary for next school year. This is the first year for the IDOE iLearn checkpoint assessments. It's actually a pilot year for those tests. They occur several times throughout the school year and are meant to provide formative student data that schools and teachers can use to adapt instruction. The data isn't as useful as it was initially advertised, but nonetheless, our schools are using this information to help determine which students need targeted support, which are on track to show their proficiency at the end of the assessment, and which students may benefit from certain levels of enrichment. According to the first iLearn checkpoint, just under thirty percent of our third, fourth, and fifth graders are currently proficient on the standards that were assessed, and each one is just a couple of standards. But which ones were assessed on the ELA test, and just over a third are proficient on the math standards that were assessed. Next iLearn checkpoint tests start next week. In terms of discipline at the elementary level, we work hard to keep our students at school and in their classrooms. Our educators provide consistent routines and clear expectations. And developing a strong relationship with our students helps us navigate situations in which a child is dysregulated. So far this school year, fewer than nine percent of our elementary students have received an office referral, and we've reduced our out-of-school suspension numbers by ten percent. The most common challenges students are having are related to aggressive behaviors, physical educations, and refusal to comply. Each school has multiple educators collaborating to help students develop self-regulation strategies and to grow a better understanding of more productive ways to navigate conflict and challenging situations. Finally, I want to share some data relative to the Elevate walkthroughs that Dr. Pedigree introduced earlier. During the first round of walkthroughs focusing on the learning community, a clear strength at the elementary level is the facilitation of safe, welcoming classroom environments. And while none of our areas were especially low, the consistent high expectation in the classroom norms had the lowest numbers. After digging deeper into this data and conferring with building leaders, the specific areas for growth for this practice appear to be missed opportunities for increasing the rigor of lessons, and at times, not challenging all students to work through the most difficult tasks and activities. For the current area of focus, student-centered instruction, we're excited that our students are demonstrating high levels of engagement, but we need to see more intentional differentiation in lessons and lesson implementation. Along with the information specific to elementary, I'm also going to briefly address a couple of items in the QAR document related to social-emotional learning and student attendance. Jen Dodson, our Coordinator of Counseling and Student Wellness, has been working at all levels this year to help us evaluate our current SEL programming. We've been piloting SEL curriculum at several schools, and a committee at North Central has been focused on determining the most important content for an SEL program for ninth through twelfth graders. Much of this work has been in response to the information we received through our panorama surveys and areas in which we have made progress, as opposed to those in which students have let us know they need more support and resources. While we've made progress in supporting students and their sense of belonging, we have work to do in areas such as self-efficacy and social awareness. And as you're well aware, the district and each of our schools have been working hard this year to encourage more consistent levels of attendance for all students. Parent communication and goal-setting at the building level have been points of emphasis. Students and parents have been reminded of the importance of being at school on time every day. Formal letters to families go out after four absences and again after eight. And once a student hits ten absences, further steps are taken to work with the student and the family to ensure they understand the impact that missing significant amount of school time is having on their academic progress. And with that, I'm happy to pass the mic to Dr. Thorpe, who will share a middle school update.
Good evening. Super excited to share what is happening in our middle schools. If you look at the data for checkpoint number one, overall, our school scored slightly higher than the state average in everything except for sixth grade math. However, our goal is to continually increase our academic achievement in English, Language Arts, and Math at all levels. Schools use curriculum maps aligned to the IDOE checkpoint standards as prepared by the curriculum team and department chairs. Teachers used Otis for math and English, English, Language Arts as formative assessments to predict how students would perform. The teaching and learning team provided professional development with Dr. Tracy Severns on data-driven decision-making, first as a whole group. And then our middle school principals got some extra love as they were able to meet with her on their own, as well as with their teams. Building leaders analyze their data with specific questions, and you can see that. I think I posted that on the DSP, and we're given feedback from the teaching and learning team. Principals share their data with staff and reflected on improvements in instructional strategies for the next iLearn checkpoint. And I do want to share that the next iLearn checkpoint is not necessarily connected to the current checkpoint. It's a different set of standards, so we can't really compare apples to apples when we get the next checkpoint. So I just want to make sure that we're clear when we get that again. Buildings develop plans based upon their own needs. We are in the process of identifying a Tier Two intervention program aligned to the iLearn test that will provide academic support to individual student needs for both elementary and middle schools. Schools use alternative and non-traditional classrooms to help support Tier Two instruction as well as small group instruction. The curriculum team and instructional coaches work with building leaders to provide Tier Two and Three support. Curriculum directors provide intervention strategies when comparing Otis data to the iLearn checkpoint data for principals to implement in their buildings. So they were given a form that compared both tests and provided with some examples to help them move the needle. Resource teachers and ENL teachers participate in the PLT and data meetings, and we continue having conversations on exactly what is strong Tier One instruction and how can we improve it. With our, and this is additional information for the checkpoint analysis, so just some of the things that I just shared. One of the things that we're really proud about is with our discipline data. If you take a look at that, when we look at the overall number of infractions, we had over one thousand four hundred and fifty-five. But I am happy to report that really only fifty percent of those are for actual behaviors. The rest were for tardies. So if you look at that, it kind of puts things in perspective. So with our discipline data, principals and assistant principals meet quarterly to discuss discipline data and disproportionality within the subgroups using Power BI. Schools also have access to the grade-eight data that they've used previously. Building leaders have discussed the impact of punitive discipline on students and have been tasked with rethinking their perspectives on exclusionary practices. This continues to be an ongoing conversation. School leaders are using resortive rooms, practices, and conversations with students and providing in virtual instruction, but more training is needed in this area. The challenge continues to be the percentage of students who have, who need high level of supports. Schools continue to use current resources such as principals, assistant principals, counselors, teachers, behaviorists, social workers, and the Student Support Services Coordinator to help support all of our students in need. We have MTSS committees that meet monthly to review their data to identify students needing corrective behavior plans. An area that we need to improve upon is develop an academic support plan as well for our students. So we're kind of lacking a little bit in that. Creating a cohesive system has been a challenge. However, at the district level, we are developing an MTSS committee to work with Dr. Elliott, a consultant, to review our current practices. So we've been practicing and using MTSS, but our goal is to create a systemic or a system-wide approach to MTSS for all of our buildings in our district. We've had several Zoom meetings and in-person meetings with district leaders, the curriculum team, instructional coaches, and Dr. Elliott, so that we can plan our foundation. Each school has provided a staff member to serve on the committee, and schools have seen an overall decrease in referrals from the previous year. So as you look at some of the information, one of the things that we are proud of at the middle level is that we've had a decrease in expulsions by one hundred percent. That's at the middle, so let's go middle school. All right, as we look at our Elevate walkthrough data, as has been previously stated before, we are looking at teachers facilitating classroom environments that are safe, welcoming, clean, and organized, and students are actively engaging in the learning process. And of course, we believe that this is also one of the reasons why students are engaging and not having as many discipline referrals as previously, in previous years. We also have an area where we've observed students contributing to the lesson by actively engaging in questioning, collaborating, and creating a demonstration of their understanding. An area of growth, let me see. Here we go. So an area of growth for us, and this is overall, is just making sure that we are making data-driven instructional strategies. So we're working with our principals with that, and our goal is to also scale it down to our teachers so that they're able to make better decisions using data to place students where they need to be. And then from our middle school panorama survey data, these are our overall results. A few things that we are super excited about at the middle level is that we have increased a sense of belonging by eight percent. And if you can do that at the middle level, you are doing amazing things because kids at the middle level, they don't want to belong. They just want to be at the level and left alone. But I think that a lot of it also has to do with our kids at eighty-six percent felt like they had a supportive relationship in their school. And I just think that that's amazing, and I am very excited with the direction that we're moving towards. With that, hand it over to Dr. Seaver.
Can I ask a real quick question while you're transitioning? On the discipline data, is that like from last year? Or is that from the beginning of the strategic plan?
That's from the beginning of this school year.
Thank you, Dr. Thorpe. Good evening, President Turner, Dr. Woodson, members of the board. I come before you tonight to provide an update on grades nine through twelve, as well as our services for multilingual learners. First, I would like to address our high school graduation rate and share our district's comprehensive response. Our overall graduation rate of ninety-point-four percent for the class of 2024 exceeds the state average of ninety-point-two percent. However, we aspire to achieve a higher graduation rate overall, and we are deeply concerned about the persistent gaps across racial subgroups. I've worked closely with our high school leadership team to analyze our data, which reveals we have fallen short of our goals. And so particularly digging deeply into class of 2024, but looking at our other cohorts as well, we recognize that graduation is a critical milestone for our students. And the North Central leadership team, as well as our district's teaching and learning team, are completely committed to addressing these disparities through systematic improvements, some of which I will be highlighting for you this evening. I'd like to share with you our three-pronged approach to increasing graduation rate, which includes, first, areas that we've identified as needing more deliberate attention or a different line of action than what we've done in the past. Second, promising practices being implemented this school year. And third, the sustaining of successful strategies that have been in place for more than one year as part of our district's strategic plan and North Central's school improvement plan. So I'd like to start by sharing some of the areas that we have identified as needing more deliberate attention at the high school level. Mr. Turner, I'm not sure if you remember this, but the last time I was here, providing a district strategic plan update, you had a great question for me. You asked if there were instances where we realized that any of our strategies were not as effective as they thought they would, or as we thought they would be. And tonight, I can share with you, or share with all of you, that with confidence, we absolutely need to be adjusting and re-envisioning some of the things that we've been doing at the high school level. As you can see on the screen, we've identified ten key areas by, as future areas of focus, based on quantitative data analysis, as well as our professional experiences and stakeholder feedback. These are areas that will require time and effort to implement systemically, but they are crucial to our continued progress. While I will not go into detail about each of these items tonight, I will highlight a few of these priorities. As you know, the grade-level support team framework was a major strategy established in our current district's strategic plan to increase graduation rate. Last year's senior class was the first cohort of students who have been part of a grade-level support team for all four years of high school. Over those four years, we have learned that the current grade-level support team structure provides many benefits, but also presents certain challenges. For example, the looping structure makes it difficult for the senior grade-level support team to support seniors in meeting their graduation requirements and planning for post-secondary pathways, while also supporting eighth graders who are building their four-year plans and transitioning to high school. To address these types of challenges, Mr. Rent and our new Director of High School Counseling have been conducting a critical review of the grade-level support team structure. They are examining similar student support team models and gathering feedback from grade-level support team members to design a future model that preserves the benefits of the current approach while addressing the challenges. We also recognize a need to re-envision our academic support and intervention, including enhanced intervention strategies in English and mathematics, increased access to tutoring, and the development of a success center that will provide in-school interventions. Currently, many of our interventions at the high school level are provided too late. We recognize a need to be more proactive with our supports moving forward. For example, one of our main strategies in the district's strategic plan has been to provide intervention classes, but in most cases, students are scheduled into these classes after they fail a class. Moving forward, we want to develop a systematic approach to identifying students by the middle of the semester who need additional support. And so we intervene at that time prior to the failure occurring. With the new high school diploma, which will impact students starting with the class of 2029, we see a need to expand our career and technical education classes. We also see a need for every school counselor to conduct a thorough review of their ENL students' four-year plans. Looking forward, we are also cognizant of the importance of leadership sustainability. Unfortunately, the class of 2024 experienced four different deans and four different APs during their four years at North Central. Leadership sustainability will help us build capacity throughout the school and ensure consistent implementation of effective procedures to support academics, behavior, and social-emotional well-being. Now, I would like to share some new strategies that we are already implementing this school year based on our school improvement planning process. We are rolling out two new database problem-solving tools this school year, which include an MTSS dashboard that was created by the North Central Assistant Principals last summer, as well as the district's Power BI platform that we will be using more intentionally this semester at the high school level. Another data system that we are improving is the standardization of our withdraw process under the leadership of our new Director of High School Counseling. This school year, we have strengthened our district-level support for the North Central Math Leadership Team, which has involved implementation of a new diagnostic assessment and intervention platform in Algebra I. This year, we have also expanded our Graduation on Time, which is our GOT program, particularly for newly enrolled upperclassmen who have credit deficiencies. We are counting all-approved Indiana Department of Education courses toward graduation, formalizing the role of the graduation coach, and conducting an equity audit of middle school credit opportunities. In the past, it was mostly our honor students who entered high school with credits under their belt. But Dr. Thorpe and the middle school team have been working on a plan where all of our students will have access to high school credit in middle school. This school year, we have added a grant-funded college access specialist position, and we have enhanced homeroom time to include curriculum that addresses college and career readiness, vaping prevention, and social-emotional learning. So we're excited about all those things that are underway this school year at North Central. But we certainly, as I mentioned, have some other areas of future focus. Finally, I would like to highlight the strategies that we've identified through our district's continuous improvement process as effective approach. process as effective approaches for improving graduation rates. The True North Academy's individualized support for juniors and seniors has been highly successful in helping students overcome credit deficiencies. Our English learner program structure at the high school level has included strategic enrollment and credit attainment through the J. Everett Light Career Center, as well as carefully designed, integrated, and sheltered content courses aligned with students' English proficiency levels. Our Learning Center tutoring program continues to demonstrate strong results in supporting student achievement. Another strategy that has been transformational, a big shift at the high school, is the transition of traditional meeting structures to enhance teacher effectiveness. So if you attended a North Central faculty meeting five years ago, you would be in the auditorium, listening as an audience member, and now it's a much more interactive experience. Our new instructional leadership team, which we use the phrase ILT, includes department chairs and instructional coaches, and they, on a regular basis, conduct in-depth classroom data analysis, facilitate professional learning, and lead action planning during time that used to be a sit-and-get faculty meeting. Typically, this year, Mr. Rent will share a brief, kind of essential, visioning message, and then they go forth into these smaller collaborative structures. We've also noted that the standardized professional learning community expectations across all content areas to ensure consistent, high-quality collaboration time has also contributed to an increase in our student achievement. On the topic of professional collaboration, I would like to share some of the results of our Elevate walkthrough data at the high school level. These 419 observations were conducted from August to November, and this data shows that our high school teachers excel at classroom management with 96% maintaining a safe, welcoming, and organized learning environment. And so we're excited about that. However, when examining equitable participation and support, we see more room for growth. While 79% of observations showed effective practices, there were 65 instances where equitable strategies were not observed and 23 cases of ineffective implementation. And so with this data, we recognize that our high school teachers excel at creating structured learning environments, but we certainly have an opportunity to enhance inclusive teaching practices to ensure that every student receives equitable support and engagement opportunities. Regarding student engagement, we have observed that 82% of classes demonstrated active participation and meaningful demonstrations of learning. However, only 49% of observations captured effective use of data-driven instruction. So while our teachers excel at fostering engagement, we want to provide additional support in using assessment data to differentiate instruction, and our next steps are focused on building capacity for data analysis and the implementation of differentiated teaching strategies. So as I conclude my report, I would like to provide an update on our services for multilingual learners district-wide. As you know, we have seen a significant increase in multilingual learners, especially in the number of students identified as having a Level 1 English proficiency. This number, as you can see from the graph here, the blue line is our Level 1 English learners, has increased from 390 students in the 21-22 school year to 859 students in the 2024-25 school year. Additionally, the overall number of multilingual learners receiving ENL services has increased by nearly 1,000 students over the past seven years, from 1,592 students in the 2017-18 school year to over 2,480 students this year. During this time, our school district, our school and district staff have been collaborating to implement strategies focused on professional development, instructional programming, and family engagement. The slide before you outlines many of the specific research-based approaches we have taken, including robust summer PSYOP training, increasing the number of ENL-certified teachers across all levels, and providing systemic cultural orientation procedures for newcomers, students, and their families. And with that, this concludes the Teaching and Learning Team's update on our district's strategic plan process. We hope that you can see we are aiming to take a comprehensive approach that reflects our district's commitment to instructional excellence and student success. We welcome your questions regarding our instructional strategies and support systems, and we look forward to partnering as a team to ensure the success of every student.
Thank you. Board, have questions? There's a lot there.
Very thorough. Thank you.
Yes, wonderful. Thank you.
No questions? You guys are tired.
So I do have a question for you. I do have a question for you. So, and this could, this is probably going to be more of Dr. Seaver, but when you look at the graduation rate, and I know we want to do better than 90%, I know we want to do better than the state, and I hate to say this on the record, but what is a realistic graduation target number? 100% just for this size of school just doesn't seem real. Not that we don't want to do this, it's just there are too many other things that can happen. So what's a a good target that you should be shooting for with all these interventions and everything you're doing? And I can't remember a strategic plan because I think we put a number in there, but what's the?
So we know that some of our students are on a track to earn a certificate of completion. So that takes a percentage of our students right off the top. So from the last year, class of 2024, we had about 3% of our students that were on certificate of completion based on their IEP. And so that takes us down to about 97%. So I would tell you, you know, we're shooting for 97% attendance. We know that's going to be very, very, very difficult. We know 95% is probably a little more doable. I would also think about similar numbers in terms of graduation rate. That 95 to 97% range would be outstanding.
And if, in that, so at 90%, let's say next year it's to, you may not have this number, but let's say you increase it by a percentage point. How many students does that equate to, you think, that we actually got through?
So we have about 850 students, so 85 students is 10%.
Okay, so every, every percent you go up, that's how many students we're basically getting across the finish line. So when you look at the graduation, so here's, here's what I've struggled with for all the years I've been on the board. All the things that we do from elementary to middle school, whether it's, you know, we're reducing the discipline and we're getting people, keeping kids in school and we get them through North Central, everything ends up focusing on that graduation rate, but yet we get dinged on all these test scores and everything else, but we work through that as a district to get them graduated, which is the goal of a district. So I, this is just a statement, you know, I don't expect any feedback from it, but it just baffles me that if you can have a high graduation rate, which is the goal of the district, that you still get all this, you know, we have the achievement gap, we want to get more students through, we could get to the 95, 97%. Totally get that. But looking at that 90% that we are moving, and all those, all that 90% are not students who come in with all the tools and resources that can, you know, that can easily breeze through, you know, our district. We have to work with them, and I don't, I struggle with that, and this is just me. Now I'm just on my soapbox. So I just want to appreciate, I just want to say I appreciate all the work that you're doing within, the work that you're doing and this plan that you rolled out for us. One more question so I can keep the board here longer than they want to. When you look, and this is going to go back to earlier, and I think I wrote down my note, right? Dr. Pettigrew, when you were just talking about overall, back when we started down the road, again, I'm showing, I've been on the board a while, but when we started down the road of cultural responsiveness and we started down the road of, you know, how do we respond to discipline differently, and we, you know, changed our, we just changed our, the handbook and everything to show that. But it was, it was kind of a slow-moving thing where we couldn't get everybody on board, you know, you know, whether it's the principals, the teachers. Do you see it like getting to a point where more people are bought into it because you're lowering some of the numbers that we were trying to lower as far as, you know, expulsions, out-of-school suspensions? Do you see this, the work being more accepted, and people buying into it more? Or do you still see a lot of, like, you know, this cultural thing? I don't know if that's the thing for me.
Well, I, I feel like we do. When we go into the buildings and we observe, and even in our professional learning with many of the buildings, I feel like there's a greater buy-in for what we're trying to achieve. Now, that doesn't mean that you won't have those that say, "This makes no sense, kids should know how to do X, Y, and Z, it shouldn't take all of this." But I do think there's greater buy-in, and I think part of that is because we have the tool of Power BI to be able to say today, "There are this percentage of kids that are suspended." Now let's dig into that and see, 80% of those are blackmales, or 50% of those have an IEP. So we're able to do that in real time and ask the question, "Why? Why is this happening? Why are we seeing this in our buildings?" And so I do think there's greater buy-in because we all want to get to the same outcome, which is, you know, kids being successful at every level. But we do have to, we do have some that don't necessarily agree, and we just continue to have those conversations and hold them accountable in the buildings.
Good thing.
Mr. Blom wants to add to that.
I'd just like to lift up two examples that came up literally this morning in our QARs, and one was at Crooked Creek Elementary about a year ago. Their alternative classroom teacher had left, and Ms. Parquette, the principal, advocated for a school counselor instead of an alternative classroom teacher with the philosophy being, "We can be more proactive with the counselor. We can go into classrooms and give lessons and work through conflict management and things like that," and they are seeing positive gains. And then the other one would be Spring Mill, where we're seeing great academic growth, and what their team keeps sharing is, as they've raised expectations for students and to some extent for their staff, to have really engaging lessons and to make sure nobody's opting out, that level of student engagement and the level of planning that's going in, those students who aren't really sure which way to go, they don't have a choice. They have to get on board and do the academics, and we're seeing gains there in behaviors as well.
Great. Thank you very much. And I'm sorry, this is really a topic I like here, so I'm sorry. One last thing, and I'll ask for a motion. But so this is more of a kudos to the Teaching and Learning Team and all of the district, what I'm about to say. And I think, and you just touched on it, Mr. Blom, I think what I really like, and we've never had this in the district as long as I've been around before me, hopefully, but we've never reduced our expectations, we've never lowered expectations in order to get to a higher number as far as graduation rates or whatever that number is. And I think being able to, to maintain that level, high level of expectation and, and discipline to that is a kudos to the team. I mean, you're working through all the other issues and barriers that may come up because, you know, North Central, that degree from North Central means something, or that pathway from North Central means something because you're, the student is going through a rigorous academic process as you go through our district. So I just want to say, it's more of a, just a thank you for the work that the Teaching and Learning, and everybody that works within our district, that we're not lowering and trying to get to some number, we're raising our kids up to reach the expectations. So I just wanted to say thank you. And now I'm done. Thank you very much. Entertaining motion.
Motion to adjourn.
As motions, any opposed? All right, motion carries, five to zero.